Okay, we'll ask our clerk to call the role of the board members to establish the quorum.
Mr. White.
Present.
Here.
Mr. Whitfield.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Brad. All right. Board, as we get started, I've put here on the table for you, we need to amend our agenda tonight. We do have five purchase orders that coincide with an action item we're going to be taking tonight on receiving a grant for the sheriff's department. And so we have purchase order 2023-2329, 2023-2326, 2023-2443, 2023-2444, and 2023-2548. Again, all coincide with 100% funded grant that the sheriff's office got that we're going to be talking more about. But we need to amend our agenda and put this right under Resolution R-10-24, put it right under that one between 10 and 11, and we'll amend our agenda. We have a motion to approve our agenda as presented along with these five additional purchase orders.
So move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as modified. The next item that we have is our minutes of our regular scheduled meeting held here on February the 22nd, 2024 at 6:30 PM. The clerk has prepared these minutes and made those publicly available on our website, and there's also packets out front that has all this information in it. Is there any corrections, modifications, or need for changes to the minutes as presented by the clerk?
I'm sorry.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakenmore. Any further discussion of the board on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Now for the fun stuff, we have a proclamation that we want to read tonight, and then we're going to take a photo, and then I have a special prize for you. So proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, Intelligent and Development Disabilities Awareness Month, whereas intellectual and development disabilities are conditions affecting an estimated 6 million American children and adults and their families, and whereas the most effective tool for alleviation of this serious issue associated with these kinds of disabilities are public knowledge and understanding, and whereas the potential for citizens with intellectual and developmental disabilities to function more independently and productively must be fostered, and whereas people with intellectual and development disabilities have many skills and talents to contribute to their neighborhoods and their communities, and whereas everyone wins when people with intellectual and developmental disabilities receive the support needed to be a contributing member of our community. Whereas Bridge Health improves the quality of life for the citizens of Walker, Dade, Tougah, and Cootuska Counties by providing services to persons with intellectual and developmental disabilities as well as their families. Therefore, I Shannon K. Whitfield, Chairman of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Walker County and urge our citizens to give the full support to effect enabling people with intellectual and developmental disabilities to achieve their full potential. Signed and sealed the 14th day of March, 2024. So we want to have anyone that's here to be recognized, to come up front. We're going to take a photo, and anybody that's here with Bridge Health, if you're a staff member, or if you are a participant at Bridge Health, please come forward.
What about Lawrence Grove?
Yes, sure, absolutely, absolutely. Anyone that's here that wants to be a part of this proclamation, absolutely. Please come forward. Okay. I'm going to let you hold it just a minute. Okay, all of our participants that are in the program, we're going to give y'all a frisbee.
Oh, wow.
All right. This is a Walker Rocks Frisbee. This is something you can have some fun with. Does it miss anybody? Okay. All right, let me slide in here, right here beside you, so we can get our picture made. And everybody look there at DeKaya, and she's going to take our picture.
All right, one, two, three.
All right, thank y'all so much.
You wanted to add?
Yeah, I wanted to add, yeah, something was said about Orange Grove. Yeah. The proclamation originally was made back in, back in the 80s. We found this proclamation back in, in the archives back in 2017. And like I mentioned before, when we found this, we had to update the verbiage because this was, this was back when it was using some very outdated verbiage. And along with that proclamation, we found some, some old pictures and along with what some people call the Walker County Special School down on Wallaceville Road. And actually, it was the Walker County School for Exceptional Children. And, and I've always been fascinated with, with this. I've always been fascinated with the name of the county, it sounded like the X-Men, Xavier School for Exceptional Children. But, and my friend Randy Pittman with the Walker County Historic Preservation Society, he has taken a picture of all of this and digitized it, and he's going to put it online. And he's, of course, preserved this for future generations. But I just want to give a shout out to Orange Grove, and STARS, and Arch of Walker County, Christ First Church. Am I forgetting anybody? I mean, there's just, there's.
No limits.
Yeah, well, I knew I was forgetting somebody.
And to have a Bible study amigos that we also host. And my name is Crystal State here, I'm a special educator for Walker County School Systems. This is my brother Trey, and I just think it's so important for our community to know that our members, sorry, that our family members matter, and that they should be integrated into the community. So it's okay to see them in the grocery store, it's okay to see them at the, at the restaurant and working and living thriving lives. If you have questions, or if you feel uncomfortable, or know someone that you recognize that you're with that feels uncomfortable, go up to those family members and ask, you know, ask questions, say hello, interact with them, because the more experience that you have, the better relationship you can become comfortable, because they have so much to offer to our community. You're such valued members of our community. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else, everything all right?
Just, we're from Orange Grove. We're in Walker County, Cootuska County, and Dade County, and North Georgia. We're also, well, Orange Grove is in Chattanooga, which is a big orange river, but I also just want to add that one of our big things is to make sure that our, our individuals are not just in the community, but part of the community. And that is something that has been very important to us, and I appreciate you doing this. And we didn't know this existed until we met Crystal last week. And so I really appreciate you spreading the word and us being ordinary and all that jazz.
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? All right, well, thank y'all for being here with us. I know we have a long meeting, y'all are more than welcome to stay, but it's not going to offend us if anybody feels like they want to leave to get home to do something more fun.
We make our statements.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
I'm glad we're here.
He's in college.
He's at college.
Oh, good.
Where?
At the college.
Our site is on, we have a big site there, and we have sites at churches and North West and everything like that.
We're always coming around.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all, appreciate you, appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
You're memorable.
Yes, I do. Thank you so much. Yes, I sure do. Thank you. Okay, we've got, we've got another proclamation we're going to do here tonight. Proclamation, Walker County Board of Commissioners for Down Syndrome Day on March 21st, 2024. Whereas March 21st has been selected to signify the uniqueness of the triple, triplefication of the 21st chromosome, which results in an individual having Down Syndrome, and whereas each year, one in every 691 children are born with Down Syndrome in the United States, representing approximately 6,000 births nationwide and 90 to 100 births in Georgia. And whereas while research and early intervention has resulted in dynamic improvements in the length and the quality of life of those affected, more investigation is needed into the causes and treatments of Down Syndrome, and whereas people with Down Syndrome poses a wide range of abilities and are active participants in educational, occupational, social, recreational circles in our community, and whereas on Down Syndrome Day, many groups and individuals will work to educate the public about Down Syndrome and to promote the potential and contribution of those with this condition. Whereas this year's theme is to end the stereotype for people with Down Syndrome. Stereotypes prevent them from being treated like other people. Therefore, I Shannon K. Whitfield, the Chairman of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby designate March 21st, 2024 as Down Syndrome Day in Walker County. Residents are encouraged to wear their most eye-catching socks on March 21st to get people talking about Down Syndrome. Signed and sealed the 14th day of March, 2024. So who all have we got here tonight that we're going to get our picture made with to represent Down Syndrome? Please come forward. And I had no idea how many frisbees to have here, but we've got extra frisbees, okay? So what we're going to do, we're going to let y'all take these frisbees back to all your other friends, okay? So you're going to get a whole load of frisbees. So if y'all want to come right here and let y'all hold this, you want to come stand right here next to me? All right, come around here, and you stand right there, let both of y'all hold that there for our picture. You want to help him hold that? There you go. Good work. All right, they're going to take our picture.
And I just want to acknowledge that the two that are here tonight is Gabe and Trey, and the two people recognizing and supporting him and asking for a proclamation today are typically the same together beside their brother.
Okay. I'm going to give you a stack of these. You want to take these? You want to take those extra frisbees? We're going to give you a stack of frisbees, and y'all can share those with all your friends, okay? All right, so glad you all are here. So glad to do that tonight. Okay, now the boring stuff. So Mr. Clay, if you would like to come forward and introduce yourself and talk about our FY23 audit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You stole my opening line there. I was going to say, and it seems to happen to me, I come to present these awesome financial numbers, and I always follow up something great like that. So that's just, you can't, you can't beat it. There's always something heartwarming that seems to happen right before I get up here with the boring financial numbers, so, but that was great. But I'm Clay Pilgrim, I am audit partner with Rushton, who performs the audit for Walker County. And tonight I have for you some numbers we'll look at here, some information on the audit for, and we're talking about here, the, the audit for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2023. Before I get started, I've got a couple, you all should each have a presentation, looks like that, that's where we'll spend 95% of our time, and you all should have a couple of letters, and then an actual audit report, which has got a lot of good, nice bedtime reading for you there for, keep you, keep you, get you asleep in no time. But before I get started, I want to first thank you all for having us back to do your audit for 2023, but also thank your entire team. I know many of them are here, recognize a lot of faces. Obviously, we bother Mr. Gray a lot more than others, but we, we do bother, we, I say bother, we ask a lot of questions, we request a lot of documentation throughout the county with various different offices, elected officials, so we're appreciative of that. And I'll say also that even though we're here March presenting the audit, the audit's been done for, for some, some number of weeks, months, maybe, at this point. So that's a testament to the folks you have and the, the work that's been, been done this year, so we appreciate that. All right, so let's talk a little bit about the audit report. So the first slide I have for you there will talk about our audit opinion, our independent auditor's report. So it's found on pages one through three of that big bound report you have there. And what that letter spells out is, and they changed it a couple of years ago to, to move our opinion first, which is supposed to be the goal of this letter, so that was one change I was very happy with, is they put the opinion, opinion first. So I am pleased to present that for 2023, we have an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. Nothing came to our attention that would prohibit us from issuing an unmodified opinion. We do follow government auditing standards in our audit, with, of course, it being a county here, Walker County, and these financial statements, that entire financial report you have there in front of you, those financial statements are the responsibility of Walker County management. Our responsibility as your independent auditor is to opine upon, give an opinion that those financial statements are not materially misstated, whether due to error or fraud. And again, we have an unmodified opinion on those financials. All right, call your attention to a couple of statements. I mentioned this entire report here, which is 112 pages, so a lot of statements, a lot of numbers, but for those of us who aren't accountants, it's a whole lot of numbers. But, but there, all those statements in there, there are really only two statements in that entire report that bring all activities of the county together in one on a full accrual basis of accounting. And that's your government-wide statements. Those are found on pages 15 to 16 for the statement in net position, and page 17 for the statement of activities. And those are like a balance sheet and an income statement for the, for the county as a whole. Few numbers from those statements, you've got your government-wide net position, net position being equity of the government. So I've got three-year comparison for you there. We'll look first there at fiscal year 2023, as you can see. And by the way, that net position, as you may or may not be aware, it's broken down to three categories. You've got net investment capital assets, which is going to be land, buildings, equipment, less accumulated depreciation on those assets, less any debt utilized to acquire those assets. That was $100,503,868 at the end of 2023. Next category would be restricted net position. It's going to be, a, a good example there is any unspent SPOLOST or T-SPOLOST funds you're holding, or any like restricted grants that you received in advance, those would all be shown as restricted net position. That was $14,248,743. And the residual, remaining net position there, unrestricted net position is $43,553,723, giving you total net position $158,306,334. For the year, net position and total increase $16,831,589. Moving on, I know you all spend a lot of time throughout the year looking at and budgeting for expenditures of the general fund. I know you look at the other funds as well, but of course, the general fund being the chief operating fund of the county is where most of your activity does take place. If, if you're looking at the financial report later, those, the general fund financial statements are found on pages 18, 21, and 24 and 25, 24 and 25 being a budget versus actual for the year. All right, looking at revenues and expenditures of the general fund, revenues for the year increased $2,796,621, or about 8.6%. A couple of specific line items or, or sources of revenue there that increased, property taxes increased $1,744,868, local option sales taxes increased $307,803. Been seeing sales tax up for, for some time now, although we are seeing just recently, and y'all probably feeling the same, a little bit of a, a decrease in that versus what we've been seeing over the last, say, year, two years. And then interest income increased $517,729. Expenditures increased $2,128,081, or about 8.4%. And I've listed a few departments there that showed the larger, larger increases of, of all departments. You can see there, data processing increased $165,658, that was due to some contract services. And then sheriff, jail operations, and animal services, all increased due mostly to personal services, which is going to be your payroll and related, like other payroll liabilities, that sort of thing, other payroll costs. And then I note, I note there at the bottom, those might have been three substantially increasing departments, but many other departments also increased due to personal services in that regard. All right, this is just a graphical depiction to show you kind of a trend here as far as three years' worth of revenues and expenditures. And we did group in here, it can be confusing sometimes when you're looking at the, at the increase or decrease in, in fund balance of the general fund, if I just show you revenues and expenditures. You've also got some items that are kind of below the line, we call other financing sources and uses. And so I've got on this chart here for you, I've grouped the revenues and other financing sources together, which is going to be more like your inflows, and then expenditures and other financing uses there together. So you can see that the blue line represents revenues and other financing sources, which would include like transfers in, proceeds from sale of capital assets, and a few things like that. $42,433,158 for 2023. And then on the expenditure side, your expenditure and other financing uses, again, well, that would include transfers out and a few other below the line items, $31,609,125 for 2023. These next two slides represent your general fund revenues by source and expenditures by function, you can see there. And by the way, you probably noticed, this, this presentation is a little different than it has been in the past. I don't want you to think I'm real creative and, and change this up every year, I wish I could say that, but I've been making the same presentation, it seems like, with different numbers, of course, for the last, I don't know, 10, 12 years, and we hire a marketing person, and we got to dress that up for you, make that look, you add these, all these pretty charts and stuff to it, so this is about my fourth one out of this new presentation format here, but I do like it. It gives you a little bit different information. But you've got, so this, this chart here shows your revenues by source. You see there, as, as is the case for almost all governments, the largest source of revenue, of course, is property taxes at about 53%, followed closely, or not too closely there, by local option sales tax at about 16%, and then insurance premium tax at 12%, and then followed out there by some others, as you can see, of various different sources of revenue. As is always the case, on the expenditure side, we typically see this anywhere between 40 and 50%, it can even get higher than that, but usually at least 40%. And as you see here, you all have 40% of your expenditures are for public safety, which is the most, most common, of course, function of, of government as far as expenditure is concerned. Rounded out there by general government, and then followed up by judicial expenditures there as far as expenditures by function. This next slide, I'd just like, like to keep you all aware, I mentioned earlier that the statement of net position and statement of activity is bring all activities together. So that includes your general fund, your SPOLOST funds, your E911 funds, all your funds. It also includes your landfill fund, as you can see here. And so I've got some operating revenues and expenses here on the landfill, a three-year history for you, blue line being operating revenues, $2,392,941, and the yellowish-orange line there, $2,226,126 is your operating expenses for the landfill. There's some fluctuation there, kind of out of control, I shouldn't say out of the control, not out of control, but the fluctuation there is due some to estimates on closure and post-closure care, which changed pretty substantially in 2022, that's why there's a little bit of fluctuation there. All right, next slide, talk about your SPOLOST and T-SPOLOST schedule. So as you all are aware, special purpose local option sales tax, and then transportation, special purpose local option sales tax, of course, those are approved by the citizens as far as the referendum on what those projects can be expended on. There is significant detail on, as far as those projects are concerned, on pages 109 through 112, just calling your attention to the totals here. There were no dollars spent yet on the, or in, in 2023 on SPOLOST 2013 issue. On the 2020 SPOLOST issue, there was $2,831,577 on Walker County projects, and then $3,88,081, expended to the cities of Walker County. And then T-SPOLOST 2027, or 2017 issue, you had $4,421,813 expended during 2023. All right, these next two slides, I mentioned those financial statements, this big bound report, 112 pages, are, are the responsibility of you all, management, these are your financial statements. There are only three items in that entire report that are really the product of us as your independent auditor, one being your independent auditor's report, we just talked about a moment ago, the other two being a report on internal control, compliance, and other matters. Because we follow government auditing standards, we do have to assess your controls, look at your processes, your procedures, those sorts of things. Pleased to present there were no material weaknesses in those controls for 2023. We did have a, a few significant deficiencies, I think we had three significant deficiencies and a non-compliance that we noted during our audit. The third letter, third product there, which is found on pages 99 through 101, is our report on compliance and internal controls of the compliance for major programs. What we're talking about there, because the county for 2023 expended more than $750,000 of federal funds, we were required to perform what we call a single audit on those major federal programs, and I'm pleased to present that for 2023, we had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no material non-compliance in relation to those federal, those major federal programs for 2023. The last two slides, I want to make sure I keep you all, as the board, governing board here, abreast of any changes that are coming or that have happened in relation to your financial statements or financial processes. We did have one pretty substantial, which we talked about a little bit last year, change that was coming. If you recall, last year, we had GASB 87, which was on leases. For 2023, we had GASB 96, which is on Sabitas, as I call them, which is subscription-based information technology arrangements. Mouthful there. What we're talking about is mostly software or other types of IT arrangements in which you are paying either a monthly, quarterly, annual subscription, and we're talking long-term only here. GASB says if you have those and you're under contract, there's no, I shouldn't say way out, there's no cancellation on both sides, and it's a long-term, and it's material, those should be recorded on the balance sheet as a liability and as an asset and amortized, just like you would any capital asset you're buying. So similar to what you, you'd be for a note or a bond debt in this case. So this standard was required to be implemented during 2023. Should have checked before I got in here, but I'm pretty sure there were none that ended up being material, if I recall. Yeah. So we, we did, that doesn't mean the work, that didn't mean we say, well, it was over and we went on by. There was a lot of work involved to get to where we didn't have that, and what I mean by that is, even though you didn't have any that had to be recorded for 2023, we had to look through, it was probably 50, 60 different agreements. So there are subscriptions that you have, you all do have items that you subscribe to, software, those sorts of things. However, as I mentioned earlier, some of those, either, oftentimes when you, when you buy software under this format, you may subscribe for, or you may enter into a contract that's a five-year contract. At the end of that five years, you don't just turn the software off, you may still be utilizing the software, but they don't typically have you sign of the contract, you just pay annually or monthly or quarterly, and if there's no contract, you can stop at any time. So in that case, those would not be under contract, you wouldn't have a definitive term, so you couldn't record a liability for that. That's one example. Another example would be, maybe you don't have a contract, you're subscribing to something that's just recurring, or if both parties can cancel, oftentimes, like, oftentimes it'll say in the contract that both parties can cancel with a 60-day notice to the other party. In that case, GASB considers that to be short-term because at any point, either party could end that. So really, your term there is only 60 days, which is less than 12 months, and you don't have to record a liability. So a lot of things like that. Also, another option is you may have a five-year contract on something, but you may be at year four on it. If you're at year four on it, only when you're left, that may be immaterial, that remaining liability immaterial. So that, there's a lot of different factors, as you can see here, a lot of assessment on these, a lot of work on the staff's part, but they're worded and ended up being recorded for 2023. But I will say on 87 and 96, which we talked about last year and this year, just because we implemented during those years, that doesn't mean those go away, and they also have to be considered in the aggregate, not just individually. So as we move forward, as you add to it, they could become material and you will have to record those. It's not just a one and done, unfortunately. And then lastly, I'm happy to say that for 2024, the fiscal year you're in now, I think it's the first time in a long time, there's not a substantial GASB pronouncement that affects 2024, so I can, I'm smiling because we've been, it seems, year after year, taking the role of the punches. So I'm letting you know this one, GASB 101. So I'm letting you know this one, GASB 101 compensated absence, it actually affects 2025, but it's going to be very minimal as far as effect, but it, it does change how, really more than anything, disclosures related to compensated absences and how those are disclosed. Right now, they say you gotta have a, a beginning balance, an increase, a decrease, and an ending balance, but the increase and the decrease is kind of arbitrary as to what that actually means, which, which hour do you take first on your vacation? So it's kind of, they're, they're kind of removing that, that's going to make that a little easier as far as that reporting is concerned. And that concludes my presentation. I do have one letter I want to make sure you look at, I'm not going to go through it, but I want to make sure you see it because I am required by standard, it's the letter that you have that says, "Significant audit matters," and it's underlined on it. You have two letters, one's a management letter, the other's the significant audit matters. So if you will look through that as you have time, these are required communications. I used to put these on the presentation. I am required to communicate these things to you all as the board charged with governance. I will say that pretty much everything in this letter, with the exception of two things or three things, is boilerplate information that if you read last year's letter, it looks exactly like that. The only things that changed in there, one, the dates changed because we roll forward to this new year. Another thing that changed is those new standards I was just talking about, GASB 96, it was one of, I think, four or five, let's see, one, two, three, four, that affected, or that, that were required to be implemented during 2023. The others were just not substantial and had no effect at all, but, so I, I'm required to let you know that those are new standards that were implemented. Few other things in there, management rep letter, I get that signed by management, saying that they haven't withheld information from it, may change my opinion. All required communications. Just take a look at that if you have time. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you all have?
Questions for Clay? I did have one question.
Yes, sir.
Clay, on this slide, report on internal control, in the third section, no material weaknesses and three significant deficiencies, could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so, so we, so each, each, we'll call them findings, comments, we actually call them comments, but, so we look at, and our firm as a whole is very big on processes, procedures, and we feel like, you hire us as your independent auditor, our time we spend, any, any, I shouldn't say any firm, any firm that does governments can put these numbers and help getting these numbers on paper, but to really learn something, get something out of the audit, to help you with your processes, help you with your policies, help you with your procedures, is what we take pride in and, and pretty thorough in. Some of your folks might say, you're a little too thorough, but we, we do look at those. So we kind of level those, and we're required to, so, so they define those in that letter in, in the report. A material weakness is basically the most significant, and that, that, it, it basically means that, that control weakness or that problem can cause the financial statements to be materially misstated. Doesn't mean it has, it means it, it could, it could be, it's material. Now, as you, the word material in and of itself is kind of a gray, you know, how do you define what's material? We, we do have materiality thresholds we have to use, but when we're talking about controls here, it's, there's no number usually involved. Sometimes there is a number related to it, but that's what material weakness means. So we hadn't, we did not have any of those. A good example, I'll give you a great example. If we have to material, or have to make a prior period adjustment, where we're changing the beginning numbers, last year's numbers, and it's material, that means those prior year statements were materially misstated, and we are required to disclose that as a material, as a material weakness. That's one example. Significant deficiency, they define that as significant, but not as significant as a material weakness. So that would be oftentimes a control breakdown or some type of, segregation of duties is a very common example. I have segregation of duties as a significant, and I think it is here, if I'm not mistaken. I have significant deficiency for that at many different governments, and it don't necessarily mean across the board, it may mean certain offices only have a couple people involved in the process, and it really is, a lot of times, cost benefit doesn't outweigh the, the risk you have there of, of material misstatement, so that's why you have those, but I can't just say, well, I understand why you're doing that, I still have to tell you, you know, you really need more people involved with your process, segregate your duties more. So that's what we're talking about, significant deficiencies. Material non-compliance is unrelated to that. Material non-compliance just means there was something compliant, whether it be a state law, like SPOS, oftentimes, if you have a, a timing difference at year end, the state's going to say, well, that's your co-ming on your SPOS funds, when oftentimes, it could be simply a deposit went automatically into an account at year end and didn't get it transferred out to, to three days after year end, that would be considered to be co-ming, even though it really wasn't anything real alarming. That's a good example, material non-compliance. And then lastly, we, we do what we call other internal controls, we call them OICs, that's like suggestions for improvement, that's where we, we look at something, it's not a significant deficiency, it's not a material weakness, it's not a compliance item, it's just something we think you would appreciate us letting you know, make you aware of, and those are what's included in the management letter. And so that's kind of our four levels of comments, that's what we mean by those. The, the definition of those, I tried to be a little more clear than just read that definition, if you read the definition, you're probably just as confused as you were before. And you may be more confused with just hearing me try to explain it, so, yeah, my explanation may be even more confused, I apologize, but hopefully that clears that up for you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Well, one example y'all brought up a couple of years ago, was a weakness, is we had some departments that they don't deposit a lot of money, so maybe they was only depositing once a month.
That's right.
And y'all come in and says, no, we don't matter if it's $1, you need to deposit once a week.
Yeah, we, we look at, and that's, that's not anything that's in a book somewhere that says that's required, we just feel like, at least once a week, you need to tell, whether it's $10 or 10 million. Now, if it's 10 million, you need to take it that day, you know, you don't leave that sitting around, but if it's, you know, and most 10 million dollar deposits don't come in cash or check anyway, but if you, you know, you need to put the money in the bank at least once a week. And we are big, as I mentioned, as a firm, on receipts. We do look at a lot of receipts as far as various different departments, whether it's at, you know, elected officials, or it's finance, or planning, wherever it's at, we do look at a lot of receipts because we see, and what we find, not tooting our own horn here or anything, but often that's what we find is when we, we go in and someone else has been doing the audit, not all firms, but some firms, we start asking for receipts, it's like, what do you mean, you want to see the receipts? And so we trace the receipt from the time it comes in, from the original source document all the way through to where it clears at the bank, and that's what we're looking at, that time in there, to make sure. And so it's kind of a deer in a headlights, so, what do you mean you're looking at receipts? Well, yeah, we want to see that process, and so that's a great example, but we, usually when we bring that to the attention, that gets, that's an easy one to fix, I mean, you take the money to the bank, so, that's a great example.
I've got a question. You can give me a really short answer.
Sure.
So you, you all do audits for counties all over, correct? Okay. On a scale of one to 10, with 10 being the best, one being the worst, what is this audit rate?
It's a good audit. It's funny you ask that question. Funny you ask that question, I get that question pretty much every time I present. Putting a number on it would be difficult, but it's...
No, I mean, better than average?
Better than average. Okay. Yes, sir. And as far as financially, definitely, for sure, I would say, how the county stands. I get that question every time. Appreciate it. I thought I was going to get leave without it.
That's what I would understand, these people are probably smarter than me, but just overall, it's, it's a good report, and I have read through some of them.
Overall, good report, yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Clay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Clay? Okay, thank you for, for coming and presenting that, the hard work that you and your team done, I know y'all put hundreds of hours, of man-hours into this, and y'all have been great to work with, appreciate you being very thorough.
Yes, sir, thank you. Appreciate you all. If you have questions after, by all means, reach out to us, we're here.
So at this time, we do need a, we do need a motion by the board to accept this audit as presented, and so do we have a motion just to accept the audit for the record?
Motion to accept audit.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, but Commissioner Hardy, any further discussion to accept the audit?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing none, the audit has been accepted.
Okay, as we get into our public comment time, one thing I want to mention, because I think maybe several of you are here tonight for this reason, but there is a proposed rock quarry that's being looked at on the south end of Walker County, and so we know at this time, when we have our public comments, those of you that have been here before or watch us online, in this setting, we limit comments to, to five minutes, and so that topic is a lot broader and a lot more questions that will surface than probably a five-minute time slot can handle. So we were able today, working with the proposed project folks, to set up a town hall meeting that will be here across the street at the Lafette Walker Public Library on Wednesday, March the 27th, from 6:30 till 8:00 p.m., and the sole reason for that meeting is to talk about this proposed project. So John and his team, John's here tonight, and him and his team will be there to present, he'll have some of his expert team members with him, and that will give you plenty of time to ask multiple questions, and you're not on the clock, and then you may have follow-up questions and sidebar questions and things, so it will give us, you know, at least an hour and a half just to come together as a community to talk specifically about that. And so it's going to be very difficult tonight, if you have any questions or concerns or comments, for us to be able to respond or for the project to be able to respond, because they're also too going to be limited in their five minutes also. So it's not trying to censor or hurt anybody or sidestep or anything like that, it's just that there's a better way to approach this publicly, and that's to have an open town hall meeting to discuss nothing but that project, and we won't cover any other topics. And so as you see here tonight, we have a pretty full agenda covering a lot of different things. So again, that is Wednesday, March the 27th, 6:30 p.m., right across the street at the Lafette, yeah, the Lafette Walker Public Library in the Ward Law Meeting Room, and we'll hope to see all of y'all there then. But is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak and address the board here tonight on, on any topic, it doesn't have to be anything about that, but this is the time that we would give you five minutes to speak. We do ask you to state your name for the record, we request that you keep your comments to things that we can address or have an impact on, because we can't fix Washington, DC, we can't fix Atlanta, Georgia, so use your time wisely, and, you know, if you want to talk about things about our community or county, that would be the best use of your time, but technically, you can speak about anything you'd like to speak about. So is there anyone that would like to come forward tonight? Yes, sir, please come forward. Please state your name, sir.
Yes, sir, my name's Melvin Moody, and I'd like to pass this out to the board, just a copy of each. So I'd like to give an update to everyone on East Warren Road. So some of you may remember that this was a road that was adopted by Walker County in 2016. However, there was dispute from Walker County of whether this road should belong to the county or not. As well, there are many issues with the roadway being obstructed, blocked, damage being done to residence vehicles, and even assaults that resulted in arrest. So tonight, can I get a raise of hands for anyone that lives, drives, or have heard about the situation on East Warren Road? Raise your hand. All right. So on October 18th, 2022, the residents received a motion and a court order by the Superior Court that reads as follows. The respondents are enjoined and restrained from blocking the ingress and egress of the petitioners or any other person on East Warren Road. A resolution of certification of road acceptance was passed to accept East Warren Road as a county road and included in the county road system on November 17th, 2016, by the Walker County Commissioner, signed by the Superior Court Judge. So I want to play everybody a clip from the very last board meeting that was about three weeks ago.
The years of previous administrations, when a lot of the roads were dirt and gravel, different commissioners over decades had accepted different roads, even though they may look near and look like basically a driveway with, you know, a limit to number of houses on it like you described, it's very true, they accepted those as county roads, and so therefore were responsible going forward to maintain those as county roads.
So a young lady, nothing to do with this subject, came to ask a question with some concerns that she brought up regarding the low road paving list a few weeks ago, and that was what was stated, and I could tell you that I couldn't say that any better. So the resident's attorney sent a letter to David Gottlieb on 2/20/2023, and David did not respond to the letter at all, and instead, it sat on his desk. On 1/25/2024, David Gottlieb reached out to myself after an update with a court ruling was sent to the Board of Commissioners. In short, he advised me that I was welcome to speak that night, however, if I was willing to hold off, he would get to the board in executive session and follow up with me in two weeks, and as of today, I've heard nothing back. Now, according to Shannon, in a discussion we had a few weeks ago, this decision falls on the Board of Commissioners, and they can make a decision on it, and all it takes is a resolution and three votes. Is that right?
That's not correct.
Okay.
It's part of the process, but not all in the process.
Okay. So in this case, these are the men that are making the decision, and then I want to hear, I want these people that are here tonight to hear this directly from them, that they're the ones making the decisions, because that's something that you and I discussed, and I want them to hear it in front of the cameras. So I've spoken to each of these men at some point, at some given time, and I've heard differently, so I want to hear from each member of the board, and I want to know two things. Number one, does the Board of Commissioners have the authority to ignore and overrule the Superior Court? And number two, what is the resolution, and when can we, these people expect to follow up with that resolution? And I'll start with Mr. Blakeney.
I'm going to have to refer to the attorney on the Superior Court. I'll be happy to take a letter, look at this letter, I did receive it, you know, it's sort of interesting you come tonight and...
Hey, David, hold on one second. Hold on one second. You've had over a year to respond, you didn't do so. If these are the men's making the decision, I want to hear their opinion on it.
Well, Mr. Moody, they certainly do defer to their legal counsel. You've raised legal issues, and I think you're, you know, that Mr. Commissioner Blakeney is certainly within his right to...
Sure.
...ask the county attorney to address it. Now, I will be happy to take another look at this letter, that is, first of all, you did make a few misstatements. One, I did reach back out to Wiggins, I didn't hear back from him, that's your attorney, okay? So that's that. Number two, I'll be happy to look at the letter, it's been a while, the, the gist of it is, is that when that was approved, what you have, among other things, what you have to do to get a private road adopted as a public road is that all people who live adjoining to that have to sign a petition, and that was not done. Now, this was, this issue came up during BB High School's administration, so that was many years ago, and yes, you came forward, and we had several meetings. You're making it sound like I, I hadn't been responsive at all, and that's something I want to clear up, because you're, it's not correct information. We sat down with Shannon, I want to say we also sat with Brian Hard...
Sheriff Wilson.
And so the bottom line is, is that not all of the property owners signed that, and I pointed that out to you.
Sure. And you have failed, you have failed to prove that, that is the law.
Okay. What you have is a letter from your attorney advocating your position, and I can appreciate that. If, if I was hired by you to, if I was paid money, I would advocate for your position as well, but it's not completely accurate what you're stating, and, and the way in which it's being framed.
Mr. Gottlieb, I disagree, and I know my time's up, and I'd be happy to prove this. Anyone in here who would like to see that, I would share that information, but thank you.
One thing I'd like to add, what Mr. Gottlieb is referring to as well is, this is a driveway easement, so the main property owner that owns the property, that's the entryway into that driveway, did not sign the petition. So what happened in November of 2016 is a previous sole commissioner took that property illegally. That was an illegal take. So we're big on property rights of people, and when somebody comes up and does an illegal take of that property and is brought to our attention, then we are not going to keep that property. There is a process, and what I was trying to explain to Mr. Moody a few days ago, this board does have the authority to take that property, but there's a legal process to take that property. They can take any property in this county, but you haven't seen them do that. They haven't been out here taking people's property. You have to go and have the property appraised, have it surveyed, and file in court that you're taking that property. And then at that point in time, it don't matter if the property owners sign up for the right or not, or accept it, you're doing a condemnation, you are taking those people's property. So our legal attorney has, has guided us through this and has proven to us and showed us the only way to make that driveway a county public road is two ways. Every adjoining, touching property owner of that property would have to sign a petition to petition this board to accept that property, or this board's got to vote to take it through the court system. And at this point, this board's not taking action to do so. So yes, that's the resolution process. It would take three votes for this board to do a condemnation through the court system and take private property. The current residents there have an easement through that property. The Superior Court or the State Court, whichever court it was, ruled they have an easement and told the property owner that they have to allow them to continue to access that property. So that was a court order that they had to continue to access that property, but this board has not taken any action to take anyone's property. Who would like to be next?
I want to speak on that first.
Yes, sir, Mr.
I want to finish, Mr. Moody had asked us all, so I've got an opinion I want to state. Excuse me. So as, as Mr. Blakeney said and as counsel has mentioned, I can't answer the question as far as the Superior Court ruling. I, I don't have that background, so I, we do have to depend on counsel. However, I will tell you that as the chairman has stated, during my tenure here, we've not taken any, condemned or eminent domained any property. However, this is a situation that's starting to get to be, it's been a problem for, for you folks that live there. I've, I feel like that after the, the order was made or given through the court system that, that there's some responsibility to enforce that order and I, I, I don't know that that's the, the county's, the board's position or if that's a law enforcement issue. I, here again, I'm not a, an attorney or anything like that. I will tell you all though, that it is time that we do look deeper into this and, and make some decisions because the problem needs to be rectified one way or another. Now, just as the chairman stated, if, if it moves into that, don't want to hear nothing about taking people's property and, and, and things like that because there's only one way we can, there's only one way this is going to happen. And, and if it comes to that, then I, I stand firm with anybody, anybody out there in the county. We try to uphold and adhere to personal property rights. I own property, I, most of us, you know, either own or rent properties. That's your right, you pay for it, it's yours. So you're getting in real sketchy territory when you start asking us to condemn people's properties, to take, understand the issue and believe you me, we want to find some resolution, we will get some resolution. I, I can assure you that. It's just you're going to have, we're going to have to look at it a little harder and if that's a step that's going to have to be taken, we will definitely be consulting with legal counsel, secondary counsel. We'll make, we'll make darn sure before we ever take a step to actually take someone's property in Walker County. And that's all I've got to say about it.
So are you and the other residents of East Warren continuing to have to pass obstructions? Are you being harassed on your road? Tell me kind of what you're facing every day when you go down your road.
Sure, and I'm not going to speak for all of you, they can speak up for it, but essentially the obstruction has stopped.
Okay.
However, anytime that we go out to go do maintenance, the road, if we go try to cut brush, we try to cut trees, do any kind of basic work just to access our home, I can assure you in five minutes we're having to call Sheriff Wilson to come out and monitor the work because we've got a group of folks that are coming out to prevent that from happening. So no matter whether I would, I prefer not to do the work at all. Based on court ruling and based on where it should begin with. However, that is the continued issue that these folks have driven and have to deal with.
So pretty much, so pretty much anytime someone tries to do maintenance on the road, cut back some brush, you're being harassed, you have to call law enforcement, is that fair to say?
There's been assaults, there's been, you name it.
I knew there'd been an assault, yes.
Yes.
Has law enforcement been responsive?
Yes.
Law enforcement has been responsive, but they are unclear that this, if this is a county road or not. And it's stateset and the police force.
But the court ordered, the court ordered for the, the stuff to cease and desist and that has ceased, you said there's not any more of the harassment, but, but it is harassment if you're going out to try to, to fill a pothole or trim limbs back from rubbing on your vehicle or whatever. If you're having to call law enforcement out there, then I'm, I'm kind of miffed if there's, if that's ever stopped or not. It doesn't appear to me that the harassment has stopped.
Has not stopped, that has not stopped.
Okay.
So just in your, just an estimation, since January 1st, how many times have you had to call law enforcement?
Well, the last time was September, so we cut it right before everything died off.
Okay.
And we did have to tell Steve, you know, he's been courteous enough to, you know, send an officer out there to basically supervise the work.
Okay.
Every, every, every time. But it takes no longer than five minutes of any of us, any of these folks going to do work and you've got a group of folks out there that are going to try to prevent it. And that's what this issue in 2016, that's what this was trying to fix.
One last question. And David, I think maybe you can help with this. So we've looked at this, we've, we've looked at it and there are pieces of property, there's, there's not a, the right of way is not, is it going to entail taking properties from multiple residents that live on? I mean, are you going, are these people going to have to give up parts of their property to get the right of way? It's necessary and I'm just asking.
They already have.
Do what now Melvin?
They already have and I gave up the most.
They already have.
In the original 2016, I think is what you're referring to, back in 2016.
Okay, okay, okay.
But all that was null and void.
Okay, okay, I got you. I, I wanted to understand what you said, so in 2016 it was done, but like you said, being done illegally or what we suspect to be illegally, then we need, we need to follow up on that. Okay.
So one of our concerns is, is when we communicated it's null and void and what our concern is, is what justifies you saying that this is null and void and this was done in Superior Court? The resolution we received back was just a letter from the attorney.
What was null and void was what the action took place in 2016 by the previous sole commissioner taking property that she didn't have the proper documentation to do so.
Well, the proper documentation was an easement that was purchased back in 1974, I believe was the previous. So that easement was purchased by a family interest and was given to the county to allow this access as easement and sold back then to the county as a county, rather purchased by the county against the adoption of the county road. So what I guess our question is, is the resolution that you're providing back to us is saying that this is null and void is only a letter from the attorney back to us and not really dependent on Superior Court to justify that letter. I feel like for that to be null and void, you have to go back to Superior Court and say this was bought illegally in 2016 by the county and so legally not just.
Well, it wasn't, you say bought, it wasn't purchased.
Or adopted, I guess, by the county.
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to our next person that'd like to speak. Yes, ma'am, please come up. Please state your name.
My name is Erica Moody and I'm also here for East Warren Road. And I'm really nervous talking in front of everybody, so sorry. But I feel like all of this needs to be said, so I'm just going to read what I have written here. For the record, we're not asking for the road to be paved, just maintained. Gravel every now and then to fill in the potholes, trimming trees and brush when they get to the point of scraping your cars as they drive by. Because some of those trees will grow down so far, I mean, they're scraping your windshield. Anytime these guys try to clean it up, the neighbors come out threatening to shoot because we shouldn't be in their road. Sheriff's Department has to be called to supervise unnecessarily. And when they're there, last time they were there, he made a gun motion at my husband when the officer turned his back. Things like that. When someone hap, something happens to one of these people because of something that should have been taken care of years ago and has been brought to you multiple times, the liabilities and the legal fees will fall back on Walker County. The kids now drive, we have kids now driving down this road with a huge concern for their safety and will do whatever we have to, to protect them. By the way, when we constantly hear that honesty and transparency are lacking from the board, here's a fine example. About a year ago, myself and a neighbor spent six hours in the courthouse going through all the paperwork that was told by you guys that was what we needed to resolve this. We found all those documents, sent them to the board as well as to Mr. David Gottlieb, the county attorney. At the next meeting, Commissioner Hart publicly thanked David for doing all of the research. And here is all of that research. If anybody would like to look through it, there's over 120 hours worth in here. Be glad to let anybody see it. Another example, it was explained that the reason it had been reversed, being taken over, was that it was done illegally, saying that 100% of signatures from the residents were required. However, when my husband asked Mr. David Gottlieb to show any rule stating this to the state, nothing has been provided. We spoke to another attorney that said he had never heard of such law and could not find anything that stated it because you're not, it's going to be almost impossible to get 100%. And there's one person on the road who has not signed off on it and that's the person that's doing all this stuff. Honestly, honesty goes a long way. We're all tired of getting the runaround about this concern that was brought to you years ago. Are you going to stand up for what's right for your district or continue to keep putting it off until someone gets hurt?
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
My name is Austin Moody and Mr. Askew, I want to thank you for your comments you just made. I'm sorry if I'm very shaky, it's the first I've ever done this. I'm 18 years old.
Catch your breath.
I'm 18 years old, I'm currently enrolled at Lefet High School. If there are two important things that I've learned at school, it's the Constitution and value of time. In life, time is our biggest essence. Seems like we can't get enough of it. Like I said, I just turned 18 and it seems like life is just flying by. However, in the case of this county, vast amounts of time have been given to the Board of Commissioners only for some of them to waste it and do what's best for themselves. One of the greatest presidents of all time, Abraham Lincoln, speaks greatly on this topic and how a long amount of time of not working for a greater change will ultimately devise us. In this case, it's a civil war between the people and the board, which is not how a government should work. That being said, I have endured personal experiences from these matters in living on the currently controversial East Warren Road, but I'm not going to get into that right now. As I said, just turned 18, I'm living here and dealing with this nonsense for the last four years has made me realize what a true failed government looks like. The fact that you've sat there for years, listening to the residents of this county speak of the mishaps of the issues throughout our county and you either A, did absolutely nothing and let it go, or B, told people too conflicting answers shows that if this trend continues, the future looks very dark for our generation in this county. So my question is, it's more of a rhetorical question, what are you going to do? Are you going to continue to ignore these issues and do what's best for yourself or will you do what's best for we, the people? Thank you for your time.
Anyone else that'd like to come tonight and speak?
Yes, sir, the blue hat.
My name is Tim Ross. I'd like to thank you for that opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. I too want to talk about East Warren Road. I know several residents that live on that street. I watched it on Channel TV 9, I saw a story on it there too. I've kept up with the issue, I've watched this thing play out. Been numerous commission meetings where the residents have come in front of you guys, they have their own attorney. 2016, as I said, East Warren Road was adopted by Walker County as a county road. The road was inspected by the Walker County Road Department, utilities were marked by the county and the roadwork was planned. Keep in mind that East Warren Road serves as a, as a major service road for electric and power lines. It's not like it's a road to a hunting camp, people live back there. 2017, as you said, the new commissioner, Shannon Whitfield at the time, stated the petition was illegal and invalid. No roadwork has ever been done on it since. One resident that we talked about on East Warren Road believes that it is their private road and they've made their opinion known. All the other residents have had to deal with man-made hay and cow manure speed bumps, man-made potholes, bobbed wire, metal stakes and boulders blocking the road. No resident should have to look at that or go around that when they go home. The only people that benefited from that, from that were Ace Hardware and Tractor Supply. That's where they bought the stuff. Guns have been used for intimidation to scare neighbors, shots have been fired on two occasions by an unnamed resident. This sounds like something you'd see on the ID channel on TV or something, but no, it's in Walker County. Today, this road is still listed in the courthouse as a county road. I believe that this commission has failed the residents of East Warren Road. However, they have not failed the resident who likes to intimidate peace-loving and law-abiding citizens. This issue is not going to go away until you do something about it, I can tell you that. Must be resolved. This commission needs to stop kicking the can down the road and yes, the pun is intended. This commission needs to take action and not bury their head in the sand or bury their head in Warren, at East Warren Road. Something needs to be done about it and done about it soon. Thank you.
Who would like to be next?
Yes, sir.
I just got two comments. My name's Sean Waller. The first comment is, I know that you put the thing on about the town hall about the rock quarry. Last time we had a big discussion about this was about the apartments by Ridgeland and you had a town hall over there at the Civic Center. Is this going to be open to the public? There's, is there going to be, because the last time I went down there, spoke to you personally and he said he had to register and get a ticket to go in. Now, yeah, the Civic Center, there was.
It was open to everybody.
There, it was only certain, it was, it, some, why would I make something like this up, Mr. Whitfield? I mean, there, there was some kind of registration you had to go do or something to go to talk about the, to talk about the town hall, about the, about the proposal of the, of the apartment complex over there because it was such a big uproar about that area. So if I go there on March 22nd, whenever you said, everybody's attended the weapon, there's no registration or ain't nothing like that.
Yeah, there's, there's no registration or anything like that. The last time there was any type of registration is when the Healthy Foundations was being proposed and we were having multiple meetings and they were concerned about crowd capacity during the Healthy Foundations. The apartments across from Ridgeland, I mean, we was even at 20% capacity probably for that event.
Okay.
So that was a different, a different event.
Okay, so I guess I got.
During that Healthy Foundations, wasn't too some of that during COVID and all and just.
Probably, yeah.
But no, I mean, we're meeting over here, I mean, the room holds probably 50, 60 people pretty comfortably. If we need to have even more meetings or follow-ups, you know, we'll schedule those as well. And I know speaking with the developer today, he's willing to have as many meetings we need to have to, you know, continue the conversation, he's willing to attend as well.
And also about this proposed rock quarry, is that something that needs to be, is that something to do like the planning commission? Is that something you, it would be postponed or proposed in the planning commission? Because I'm just finding out through the news. I caught it, it caught me by the news, that's how I found out about it.
Yeah, it's already meets the proper zoning. So typically, if it went before the, the planning would be for a zoning change and then it would come here for the board, but since it's already zoned correctly, then there's no action of the planning commission.
So any, any company that can seize, seize a property, piece of property and they say it's already zoned, they can just come in and start asking for zoning privileges and like that? That's, that's what they do.
Well, what they do, if it's already zoned properly, so like if you have a, a piece of property in a subdivision that's zoned R1 and you want to build a house, you don't have to go have it rezone or have the zoning modified, you just go and pull a permit to, to build. And so the project right now is requesting permits through the state for the project.
EPA, things like that.
They're in the permitting process, but there's not any zoning modifications that are necessary.
So, so, so anybody that wanted to, to do anything like that, they can, if I wanted to open up a rock quarry business and I just need a piece of property, I can just go do that and say, look at the EPA records and see.
You have to have permits through the EP, state EPD, correct John for that. It's, it's a state-driven license you have to pull for that.
Yeah, and it has to be zoned properly. So if you had a, you know, a piece of property that wasn't zoned properly, then you would have to go through the planning and something and then come to the board for approval.
So even though if there was streams and stuff like that for this proposed?
Yeah, the EPD looks at that. They, they look at the weaponry, they look at the streams, they look at all that, yeah. And it's, it's not something they get in three days, I mean, it's a very lengthy process.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I just feel like, you know, the transparency about it, like, like I said, I, I found out watching the news.
Not, not, we're having a meeting in a couple weeks.
Yeah. And you know, one other thing I want to talk about this East Warren Road, I have friends that live down that road and I'm afraid of my safety of going down there to that road of potential hazards of tires being blown or being shot at, what, what they're saying at. Long story short, I had a person pass away for being at the wrong place at the wrong time. And I, and I, and I, and it's a shame that I have to call and make sure everything's fine and don't, or anything like that. And it's very, so I just want to know what dictates a private road to, to its county road? I know it's got a sign and everything and a blue sign is a private drive.
That's correct.
So, so a private drive, so these people, they were zoned, they were allowed to, to build a house going down a private drive like that?
Well, Sean, I.
And I, and I know where, where this has come from because I've been, where I lived that grew up and everything.
Yeah, I mean, I, I live on a private drive, on the drive you were talking about. Yes, you can build a house down a private drive. And, and I've.
And I've talked to Melvin several times. I'm all in favor of trying to find a solution, but I'm big on property owner's rights and I'm not okay with it.
Because I know exactly, all it takes is one person to say no and then that's it. The road can't be turned to a county road. One person just has to agree.
And I get their frustration. You know, I mow that driveway.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I trim the limbs, I fill every pothole with shovel, I do it all by myself. So I get their frustration, but I am big on property owner's rights and even if the county is going to take my driveway and one property owner said no, I would not be in favor of the county government taking their property.
Right.
Thank you for speaking. Yes, ma'am, please come up.
I'm Betsy Hibbert at 620 Oakton Road and I wanted to talk about the quarry, but since we're having a meeting, I'll do it about zoning. So you said yourself at the last meeting that it's important to remember why zoning is so important. We have counties surrounding us where anything goes. But isn't that what we have here where anything goes? I mean, we have the owner of a quarry who said he looks for counties like ours where basically anything goes, where mining is allowed and an agricultural zone. How can we protect Walker County with this comprehensive plan for future land use if that includes destroying the land and not going through avenues to even see if this is appropriate? I understand it goes through the state, but what about us? What about sophisticated zoning laws for us? So I'd like to know what steps can be taken to amend the zoning laws in Walker County to make mining not allowed in Walker County.
Yeah, that can, the ordinance can be modified by this board and take, and make changes to that. So we have to have two public hearings, has to be advertised, has to be time for people to come and speak and the board can make changes to the ordinances of this county on any topic.
Okay, so is that something that community outreach efforts would be needed to make that happen? I mean, we want properties like Macklemore coming to our community. I don't think that they would appreciate after putting billions of dollars in to have a rock quarry right by their luxury property.
I definitely, I would like to reject one thing and that is, and we're, you know, it's sort of difficult in a five-minute opportunity to explain this clearly, but it's a, it's a balancing act between a property owner's right and other people in the community. Okay? So let me give you sort of an extreme example, okay? Probably the vast majority of people would be opposed to adult entertainment being in Walker County, okay? But the law says that in any zoning that is done in any county, there has to be areas where certain legal actions are permitted. So I'm not sure that we or the board can say, thou shall be no mining in Walker County. They can restrict it to certain areas, just like if you look in our, in the Walker County zoning law-
I read it.
-there is a small area for adult entertainment, okay? And I know that that's very controversial and it's not here for me to say yes or no. I know it's a moral issue, but what I'm telling you is sometimes whether people like proposed uses of property has to be balanced against a property owner's right to use it in a manner, in a zone where it is permitted. And I do believe that this rock quarry is located in a zone that permits rock quarry. You cannot do that, for example, in an area that is owned R1, R2, things of that nature.
Right, it's in an agriculture zone, which I guess if you're just someone who's coming in to, you know, enjoy Walker County's beautiful landscape, you don't know that, but that's probably something that you should look into because I feel like a lot of surrounding counties, not necessarily in Georgia, but they allow it in industrial areas, not agricultural areas. I mean, other counties, it's much more strict and it goes through the planning zone, zoning commissions and people have the chance to talk about it, which we never got, but I appreciate your time and it's good to know what y'all think.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Randy?
Good evening, I'm Randy Pittman. I'm with the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission tonight. Give you a little update where we're all with the Oak Hill Academy. You know, we went a week or so ago to visit our House Representatives down in Atlanta and our state senator to get some help with getting the revocable license moving on the state level. Well, we've run into a roadblock. I'll read part of this email. Walker County will need to involve Historic Preservation Division on their plans for stabilization as we currently do not have an architectural historian working in the DNR, the school's own DNR property down in Macklemore Cove. We cannot provide the level of technical assistance needed for the project as the school building is owned by DNR. Any work performed on this historic building will need to be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Division to ensure the scope of work is in compliance. So Ms. Gabriella, she has really been a great team player with us, helping us through this on the state level. We got that information when we was on our way to Atlanta that day. So it changed our whole perspective, you know, we was wanting that license so we can get up there towards rattlesnake season, you know? But John Culpepper responded, since the commission is required to obtain the services of a consultant to perform the stabilization and scope of work for the project, the commission will have to seek grants and donations to cover the cost of the consultant. Therefore, we cannot start the stabilization of the cabin until we have the funding in place. The Walker County Historic Preservation Commission fully intends to see this project completed. We are committed to preserving this natural, natural historic treasure that is located in Walker County, which has stood the test of time over 184 years. So that's where we're at. We got to hire a consultant and that's another problem. The state don't have one. We reached out for our historic survey. We've got to have a historian to do that. The state don't have one, you know? They're like everybody else, they're short on help, so.
Don't give up.
Oh, we're not giving up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move forward then with our agenda. Okay, we have Resolution R 009-24 to make budget adjustments to FY 23. Going to ask Greg McConnell, our CFO, to come up and speak to this and the reasoning for this.
Well, historically, we've always done this in the past until Mr. Whitfield became Commissioner. We just go in and automatically be in the budget because legally you cannot overspend the budget. And so you're in trouble being the board because we overspent the budget. So what this amendment does is get us back in compliance with state law. And it's been several departments, which I don't have the copyright in front of me on that, but a number of departments overspent their budget this year. And there were several funds actually we got after the year started, which unfortunately was never budgeted for, like some of these ARPA monies. So we spent those without being budgeted, however, I guess that was my fault. I should have brought your attention, but I didn't because I don't know what's coming and going on the ARPA money because it's been insane this year. But sure, that's what it is, just get us back in compliance with state law.
Well, this matches us up to the audit report as well that he did.
Right, he just, we rounded up numbers slightly above the expenses on there.
So overall, we outperformed the budget, but there were a few departments. Let's see what the, can find that page.
Should be wrapped in footnotes.
Yeah, so on page 24, we had budgeted for $30,983,939 in our general fund. We took in $35,430, $35,430,975. So that was $4,540,000 more than we had budgeted. And then on the total expense side, we had budgeted $28,814,757 and our total expenditures was $27,521,849. So we, on our total expenses, we were $1.7 million under budget on our total expenses and so that increased our fund balance by $7.9 million. So these are the items that we were over on, but it doesn't take into account, we don't have to adjust if we're under. So if we're under budget on something, we don't have to adjust.
Right.
But these that we were, were over on, we do, as an example, Meals on Wheels, we budgeted $47,700 and we spent $48,719. So they're doing a $1,300 budget adjustment for Meals on Wheels. So that's just, you know, one example that we run into. On our insurance was more, so they're doing a budget adjustment for $35,000 because the insurance bill came in because we added more vehicles, more equipment that we had to insure. So, and then you indicated the ARPA funds we had to do as well. And then there was some inmate welfare funds that the sheriff's office manages as well and then also the special projects funds that the sheriff's office managed. We had, I don't know if we'd ever even budgeted for those at all because those are things we don't-
We don't see that one at all until the end of the year, we finally get-
So on those, those were zero budgeted to start with and so those get those, so we covered those as well. We get any questions on that?
Thank you.
All right, so we have, okay, so we have a resolution. Where is that resolution? 24? Yeah, 24. Where's my? Yeah, I don't know where my copy's going to. Oh, here it is. All right. Okay, so Resolution R 009-24, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to make budget amendments to fiscal year 2023 budget. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, the governing body of the county changes, change with managing the physical affairs of the county, did appropriate the funds necessary to operate all the various departments and to meet the expenses of the government for fiscal year 2023 by providing said budget resolution R 036-22 by the majority vote of the members on September 22nd, 2022. And whereas upon the close of fiscal year 2023, it was determined that necessary for final adjustments is required and therefore necessary to publish state and approve all final budget amendments and recommendations by the chief financial officer. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, does hereby approve. The amendment stated in the fiscal year 2023 budget is shown in Exhibit A, so resolved and adopted the 14th day of March 2024. We have a motion to this resolution.
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. We have a second.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion's approved. Okay, our next resolution, I'll read this resolution, then I'm going to ask you to come up and speak, so if you want to make your way up. Resolution R-010-24, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to accept the terms and conditions of the American Rescue Plan Act Public Safety and Community Violence Reduction Grant Program and for other lawful purposes. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas the Walker County Sheriff's Office, sheriff applied for grant funding for the purchase of several flock cameras, a body and thermal scanner system, multiple unit portable two-way radio systems, and modernization of the sheriff's in-house digital intelligence system. Whereas Walker County has been awarded a $558,697 for the project by the Georgia Governor's Office and planning and budget, whereas the funding remains an offer until Walker County accepts and executes the terms and conditions of the grant agreement. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, does hereby authorize the chair at his designate to sign and execute the grant agreement and to take the necessary steps to implement and perform the purposes of this public safety project, so resolved and adopted the 14th day. So please introduce yourself and tell everyone your involvement in this.
My name is Alex Litz and I work with the Walker County Sheriff's Office. I actually wrote this grant. We originally wrote this grant for $507,907. It was written in 2022. Actually, we received approval, an award of this grant for the total amount of $558,697.70 June 8th of 2023. And we are asking for you to accept the terms and conditions and also the additional, I believe you amended it for the five POs that are above $15,001 for those to be approved today. But if I wanted to be available if you had any questions? This is technically a federal grant. It was coming through the American Rescue Act, which is COVID funds, which is what it was called, but it is actually distributed through the governor's office. It was a competitive grant that we wrote, that I wrote for and it was really amazing that it was accepted. So we have the Tech 84 Body Scanner, which allows for scanning of contraband internally as well as externally on the body and it has been a game changer for a lot of the officers and safety there. We also have the tech, the flock cameras that you mentioned, the Cell Bright, that is the digital forensic software that allows us to download legally obtainable evidence from cell phones and tablets and also allows us to use the same software as the GBI. So it allows us to also communicate if we're doing a dual investigation. So there's a lot of real benefit from the things that we have been able to purchase.
So there's probably a lot of people at home that doesn't know what a flock camera system is.
Yes, so a flock camera, you have an idea of a license plate reader, if you've ever heard that before. So this goes further and it's actually able to identify, much like you would facial recognition, but through recognition of vehicles and things like that. So an example is there was a TikTok murder that happened not too long ago, Rossville was a drive-by shooting and we were able to utilize and benefit from the flock cameras of Hamilton County and they were able to identify the truck within a matter of hours and allow us to be able to arrest the participants in that murder and they have been convicted and sentenced to prison.
From an image of the truck they were ever running out?
They were able, we were able to give them seriously very minimal identification, which is it was a red truck within a certain, you know, size and also within a certain span of time. They were able to run the amount of vehicles that went through that system and give us the actual identification. At the time, I believe, if memory serves, we thought it was a Ford and we actually come to find out it was a Dodge vehicle. And so they were able to obtain that information and lead to an arrest.
So also for everyone's information, back in 2023, when you got this grant, I know there was some discussion between you and our county attorney and our CFO. We didn't think that the board was going to need to do this process, but since then, y'all have determined that the board needs to accept it so we can manage the funds and process the grant.
Correct.
But y'all were very fortunate and should be very proud that you got 100% funded grant.
And a little bit more.
And a little bit more.
For contingency, because of the time that it's taken from the time that the grant was written and the time that the grant was approved, there were some price fluctuations. And yes, due to the fact that Walker County Sheriff's Office utilizes the procurement policy of Walker County, you know, Commissioner's Office, that's why we're asking for you to approve this resolution today.
Yeah, so originally, we thought the sheriff was able to approve this and he thought so as well and everybody involved, but when they go back now, they're telling us, hey, take a step back and come through this formal process of the board. So that gives our CFO the authorization to manage the grant and handle the documentation along with you in concert to do so.
Yes.
So any questions of the board?
You said these were ARPA funds, but not from our ARPA funds, from federal ARPA funds?
Correct. They were separate ARPA funds that were provided to the governor's office and he was able to actually give them out in different grants.
So yeah, this is over and above any funds that we've already received?
Right.
Separate, completely-
Through the state, through the federal government, is that correct?
Yes, federal to the state, but completely separate from ARPA funds that you may have received in a different contribution.
Okay, so were the competing, people competing for the grant statewide then, right?
So they were competing for the violence reduction grant. That was one specific one that was utilizing ARPA funds. There were other grants as well that were utilizing ARPA funds and I believe you received some fundage that way for a different type of community grant and those were through the governor's office, but two separate pots of money.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have read the Resolution R-010-24. This would be for the Board of Commissioners- This would be for the Board of Commissioners to accept and execute the terms and conditions for the five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollar grant. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion?
Yes, one question. So does that motion include the purchase orders?
No, we'll need to handle those separately.
Okay.
So we'll take those up next, but great question. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the grant application or the grant resolution is approved. If I can get that out.
I'll come back forward just in case.
And then we do have, that we added to our agenda, the five corresponding purchase orders, and I'll read these, and if y'all are okay, we can approve these all at one time, so we won't have to do them individually. But let me read them for those in the audience and at home. Purchase order two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-three twenty-nine is for capital equipment, for radios, for the jail, for communication. This is in the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. This is to Motorola Solutions. The second one is two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-three twenty-six. This is for a digital forensic computer software license in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. And this goes to Cell Bright Incorporated. Purchase order two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-four forty-three, this is for police ballistic shields and hardcore Delta special shields. It was thirteen of those ballistic shields. Total amount is sixteen thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. This is for Blue Proof Zone Aon Ventures LLC. And the next one is purchase order two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-four forty-four. This is for sixty-five ATE helmets, sixty-five helmet bags, and forty-six helmet mount lights in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and twenty cents. This is to the vendor of Hardhead Ventures LLC. And then purchase order two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-five forty-eight, this is to Tech eighty-four interceptor whole-body security scanning system in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars, and this went to Tech eighty-four, Inc. So is there any questions for our representative here today on these purchase orders?
So which one of these contains the camera that can tell you what kind of truck this went by?
So actually, flock camera systems was a smaller amount, so it wasn't covered under the procurement policy because it's a payment plan over the term of our grant, and our initial payment was eleven thousand, four hundred dollars.
Okay.
So that wasn't required. It was actually something that Greg McConnell could approve through his office.
And my last question is, the last purchase order for two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, that's the whole-body security scanning system? Is that one unit?
It is one unit, but that, the two hundred and eleven thousand dollars includes a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for the body scanner itself. There was a delivery fee. Then also additionally, we have the warranty that will be covered for the entire time of the grant. So that's why it's, the two hundred and eleven thousand covers the machine itself, one unit, the actual kiosk that utilizes, where we can actually type in our code to get in and be able to see the scan, and then also the warranties for the entire term of the grant, which is, ends in two thousand and twenty-six.
Any additional questions? All right. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve all five of these purchase orders?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Askew. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those purchase orders are approved.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to ask Chief Hodge to come forward as well as we read this one. Resolution R-011-24, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to authorize the chairman to execute automatic aid agreements for fire services. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas the official code of Georgia, Section thirty-six, sixty-nine dash three B, allows local fire departments to provide assistance to other fire departments with the approval of the governing authority of each department. And whereas the county desires to provide supplemental fire protection services for the benefit of the citizens of Walker County, Georgia, and neighboring communities. And whereas the board has determined it is in the best interest of the county to grant signing ability and authorization, excuse me, signing ability and authority to certain persons described hereunder in order to expedite agreements for fire protection services in the county. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, that the board chairperson is hereby authorized and empowered to take all action necessary or appropriate in the execution of any and all written instruments pertaining to fire service agreements for the provisions of the automatic aid for the protection of our citizens, so resolved and adopted the fourteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like Chief Hodge to give us an overview of the different communities, different fire halls that he's working with on this.
Thank you. So as a reminder, there's two types of aid provided, given and received by the fire service. That's, one is mutual aid, and the other is automatic aid that we're discussing today. Mutual aid is when the units are dispatched, they're responding, they make a later request for assistance from neighboring departments and/or arrive on the scene. For example, a large structure fire where you need additional help or resources, and we make that request after the fact, after, after we are dispatched. We are a part of the tri-state mutual aid, which is, has departments from Georgia, Tennessee, Alabama, and have been for years. Automatic aid is when we have these, the agreements and the fire departments are dispatched initially. So for example, we currently have automatic aid with Catoosa County, Whitfield County, the city of Rossville. So in the event that a structure fire comes in into Walker County and it's within the area that Catoosa County, for example, is supporting us, they're automatically dispatched. The communication centers communicate and dispatch without request. We also get credit from the insurance service office for ISO rating schedule for the community by having these agreements. Additionally, you know, when most of these, most of these counties and cities have limited resources with firefighters, and so when you start talking about firefighter safety, coverage in your county or city, the ability, even looking at your budgets to not have to increase cost for staffing because we can get enough firefighters there jointly, it all, it all kind of goes together. So we're looking at and working with City of Lafayette, City of Lookout Mountain, Town of Tryon, Toluca Fire Department, Sublina Fire Department, also to add to this, to our automatic aid agreements. So being a little bit selfish and trying not to take two months of your time, because I am the one coordinating this with, with all these departments, so it takes time to get the paperwork back and forth. All the, all the attorneys look at it, so it takes time. I made the request that the board give the chairman the right to sign these at one time because our goal is April first. That's what we're, we're trying to get this all on board. We're working with, we have a new mapping software that we're working with that, that we're able to, to identify these locations through a five-mile road mile distance, and then it automatically populates the addresses into the CAD so that they can be dispatched. So it's, we're at a point in time where it's no longer, and all the other, a lot of the other counties or cities, they don't have that capability. So we're doing this as a whole for everybody. So they're working on extending our map outside of Walker County currently to include Chautuga, Whitfield, Catoosa, Dade, so that, so that we can make this a little more seamless and not have to go out, draw on a map, look at breaking numbers and addresses. So it's going to be up to date, as well as we're working with one format in the agreements, not a lot of different types of agreements going on. So is there any questions?
Questions for Chief Hodge on this?
Thanks for your work on it. That's, that's a great benefit for all counties. I asked it for people in other counties, too. So yeah, that's great.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Hearing none, we have a motion to approve Resolution Zero eleven dash twenty-four to execute automatic aid agreements.
Yes, sir. Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. Okay. Next that we have here, Resolution R-012-24, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to declare property as surplus and removed from the county inventory. Whereas OCGA thirty-six dash nine dash two provides that the county governing authority shall have the control of all property belonging to the county and may by order enter on its minutes direct the disposal of any real property which may lawfully be disposed of and make and execute good and sufficient title thereof on behalf of the county. Whereas Walker County Fire and Rescue has requested one two thousand and two Ford F-550 rescue truck, VIN number ending in three one nine one, be deemed surplus and further requests that the property be removed from the county inventory. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the one two thousand and two Ford F-550 rescue truck, VIN number ending in three one nine one, be hereby declared unserviceable surplus and removed from the county inventory, so resolved and adopted the fourteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four. Commissioner Hodge, I mean, Chief Hodge?
So this is one of ours. So we're taking, we've, we've taken delivery of our, of three of our seven new QRVs, our quick response mini pumpers. They're, they're finishing, the dealer is finishing up some, some items on them, and we should have those in service hopefully in the next week, week and a half. So we made a commitment, it's been a couple of years now, or close to it, but we made a commitment to surplus older vehicles as we, as we got, as we got the new ones in. So this, this particular unit is upwards, is close to ninety thousand miles on it. It's, it's been, it's been a good vehicle, but it is twenty-three years old. So it is one of the ones that we've selected to surplus from our, from our unit. And we've got, we've got two more we're looking at as well. We're going to repurpose one, I think, and then surplus another one.
So this being a rescue truck, this doesn't actually pump water, haul water?
No, sir. It's a F-550 with a rescue box on it for utility supplies and equipment.
It can be actually for like a quick response, sure type of vehicle.
Okay. Any questions of the chief? All right. Hearing none, we have a motion to approve Resolution R-012-24 to surplus this vehicle.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's approved to surplus this truck. Okay. The next item we have is an intergovernmental agreement between Walker County, Georgia, and the town of Tryon to convey personal property to assist in mutual aid. An intergovernmental agreement between Walker County government and the town of Tryon to convey property for the purpose of mutual aid. This intergovernmental agreement, agreement is made and entered into by and between Walker County, Georgia, Walker County, and the town of Tryon, known as Tryon. Whereas Walker County is the owner of a two thousand and two Ford F-one, excuse me, Ford F-550 rescue truck, VIN number ending in three one nine one, motor vehicle, known as vehicle. The vehicle has been declared surplus by Walker County, and whereas Tryon has informed Walker County that the Tryon Fire Department, Fire Department is in immediate need of an additional motor vehicle rescue truck. And whereas Walker County Fire and Rescue and the, and Tryon Fire Department provide mutual aid for the purpose of providing supplemental fire services to the citizens of both communities. And whereas the conveyance of this vehicle from Walker County to Tryon will further the Tryon Fire Department's ability to provide aid to Walker County Fire Rescue. And whereas the agreement was presented and approved at a meeting of the governing authority of both Walker County and Tryon. Now therefore incorporating the foregoing recital of the consideration of the mutual promise, conveyance, and undertaking of the parties set forth herein, and for the public purposes set forth herein, the parties convene, agree, and bind themselves as follows, covenant and agree and bind themselves as follows. Number one, transfer the ownership of the vehicle, Walker County grants and conveys the Tryon legal title of the ownership of the vehicle. Number two, no liability for Walker County. The parties agree that Walker County shall not in any event be liable for any personal injury, loss of life, or damage to any property arising from directly or indirectly the possession, use, maintenance, or operation of the vehicle or any of its parts by the Tryon Fire Department or any of the, of its agents, employees, representatives, or any third party. Number three, disseminate out of the warranty, it is understood and agreed that Walker County makes available this vehicle to Tryon as is conditioned with all faults of, in whatever condition it may be, without any agreement, warranty, or representation expressed or implied as to any matters whatever respecting the vehicle without limiting the generality of their foregoing. Walker County expressly declares any implies warranty, merchantability, fitness, or adequacy for any particular purpose for the use, quality, or maintenance. Number four, enter agreement, this agreement contains the entire understanding of the parties with respect to the subject matter hereof, and no representations, inducements, promises, or agreements oral or otherwise between the parties not embodied herein shall be or any force of effect. And witness hereof, Walker County or Tryon has caused this agreement to be executed and duly authorized. That sounds like that was written by an attorney.
Mm-hmm. Three of them.
Yeah. All right. So Chief Hodge?
So this now surplus vehicle, the town of Tryon reached out and asked if we had any vehicles, and this is, this is common in, in government we've seen in the fire service over the years when neighbors helping neighbors. We, we surplus this unit, we're going to get minimal return on it, and the greater good is that the town of Tryon can put it to use for some, some more years for, for them. In addition to, for example, when we, when we get the automatic aid agreement signed, they send a pumper this way, but they have, they have firefighters that are back at the station. They can still use this unit to respond in their community. So again, I'd like to always talk about, we often bring boundaries into play when we, when we're talking about certain fire departments or jurisdictions, but the only, the only people that really need, the people that need help when they call nine-one-one. So we'd like to forget about boundaries, and this is just simply neighbors helping neighbors. It's a greater good. And so in my opinion, they're going to, they're going to put this unit to a lot better use than we will, the minimal amount of money we would get if we surplussed it.
Any questions for the chief?
Good.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve this intergovernmental agreement with the town of Tryon.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Does you want to speak? Representing the town of Tryon?
My name's David Gillen. I'm familiar to a lot of you because I spent a lot of years in Walker County working. They've recently named me public safety director, town of Tryon. I just want to appreciate Chief Hodge and the board, and you, Mr. Whitfield, this is an asset to town of Tryon. I really like, thank you for it.
Very welcome. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. All right. Very good. Okay. We're going to cover just briefly our department statistics. I know this meeting's getting long, and this is part of our agenda packet, so I'm not going to cover everything, but just a couple of things that I want to, to highlight. I really want to brag on our roadside trash cleanup team. They did an outstanding job in February, being a short month and cold month, but they picked up thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty pounds of trash off the road in one month in February. January, there was five thousand, one hundred and eighty pounds. So getting almost fourteen thousand pounds of litter and trash off our road sides, that's a, that's a big deal, and very, very happy for the team effort to, to do that. Our smoke alarm installs fifteen, that's a good, strong month. We've already got twenty-three installed for the year, so we still have smoke alarms that we can come install for folks. Also, single-family home construction, even February, short month, twenty-five new permits pulled. Also, we are still making a lot of transit trips and getting people where they need to go at two thousand and thirty-one trips. There's a lot more information there for your review, and it's a good report, just want to hit some of those highlights. At this time, we will ask for our commissioner comments, and we'll start with District One, Commissioner Blake Moore.
Just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved and giving us your opinions. If I can help you in any way, contact, stream. If I can help you in any way, contact us through email.
Mr. Askew?
A couple of things. I do appreciate the participation from the citizens on several different issues that they've come forward with, with concerns and questions. I think that the public, the town hall or public meeting that we're going to have that will be able to give the quarry folks that are working on that, that opportunity, I think that's a great idea, to give them a real forum for people to come in and just talk and ask any question you want and get your answer. I also want to address the, the head in the sand and kicking the can. I'm going to tell you something, my head's not in the sand and I don't kick the can. We've got some issues, and like we said, and we've talked about tonight, it's not the business of the board to generally get involved in taking people's property. It's a very serious issue. And so I ask that if that, if, like I said, if it comes down that we only have certain options, then we will have to make decisions. But it's not a kick in the can, it's a very unique situation, and it involves y'all's property rights and other property rights. So we just want to make sure that when we do this, it's done the right way this time. So, you know, appreciate your comments and all, but just give us an opportunity to, if that's the business we're going to need to get into, then like I said, we're going to really look at that hard before we start trying to take people's property. I just, I think that's a, that we've got to be careful there. So I just wanted to thank you for coming, thank you for, for your comments. However, we don't think that we've put it aside. I think we're trying to find resolve, and that resolves narrowing down to a very small amount of options. And that's what we want, is we wanted all the options, and, and that way we can make a better decision. So that's all I've got.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, so I want to address that too. Ms. Moody, you, you said that I made the statement thanking the county attorney for his research. I don't think I said that. I might have, I'm not going to argue that point. My intention was-
We have our own work.
Okay, well then I made a mistake. My intention was to thank the attorney for his hard work on these four, because he and I, and the sheriff's son, and the sheriff, and Patrick Stanfield, I've sat in a lot of meetings. It is my understanding that we have two options. Number one, everybody's got to give the county pieces of that land and make a rip. That has not happened. Number two, like Mark said, we can take the property. That has not happened. At the last meeting we left, Sheriff Wilson was there, Patrick Stanfield was there, and one other representative from the sheriff's department, and they assured us they were going to answer calls there. I did not know until tonight that you were still having problems there, but you told me the sheriff's coming out there. So Mark and I are meeting tomorrow about some other issues. We're going to go down to the courthouse and talk to the sheriff and see if there's an issue, and we'll get back to you. I would also like to thank Carl, and I think the paving is done in Villanueva, I think Carl's here, interviewee.
He is.
Yeah, the paving is all done in Villanueva, which was off of last year's paving list, is that correct?
That wraps it up.
And that was the last rows on the paving list.
Twenty-three.
On 23 paylists, right. We've got the 24 paylist. Now, Mr. Chairman, when is the, when is the bid hearing for that? You mentioned that last meeting.
The bid opens in April the 1st at the commissioner's office, and then that information will be reviewed by the staff and the attorney, and will be on the agenda at our first meeting in April for the board to make the award of that bid.
Okay.
First meeting in April.
Very good. And that's all I have. Mr. Stoltz?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I just want to say thank you to all of our employees, appreciate the hard work you guys do. Also want to mention some potential severe weather coming in early in the morning. Carl, and you and your guys be safe, and chief, and emergency services, you guys be safe as well. Also want to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day. Those who are Irish, and those who are Irish at heart.
Next week.
Exactly. And so that's all I have. Back to you, Jerry.
Very good. All right, thank you all for being here. We've had a good turnout, had a good meeting, covered a lot of items, and it's always thrilling to do our proclamations and recognize people in our community, so we appreciate them coming out and participating. We do have a need for a short, I'm being told by the attorney, short, and short is being focused there, of an executive session to handle some conversation regarding real estate. So do we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate?
Short executive session, that's most.
Oh, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart, as long as it's short.
I'll second a short executive session.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will be back shortly.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Joe Leguie, Public Relations Director for Walker County Government. The board has just entered executive session. This is a process that allows elected officials to discuss a specific, sensitive topic behind closed doors. These are topics that are exempt from the Georgia Open Meetings Act. Executive session topics must fall into one of three categories: litigation, real estate, or personnel matters. In terms of litigation, the need may arise for the board to consult with a county attorney on pending or potential lawsuits, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought by or against Walker County Government, its officers, or employees. Real estate covers discussions regarding the future purchase or acquisition, disposal, or lease of property. Personnel matters would cover the discussion or deliberation on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal of a Walker County government officer or employee. Now, if a vote is needed pertaining to an issue discussed in the executive session, it must be taken in an open meeting, otherwise it is not binding.
Excuse me, we do have one action item out of our executive session that we'll need to do real quick, so I need to call us back to order. It is Thursday, March the 14th, 2024, at 8:43 PM. I'm going to ask our attorney, David Gottlieb, to present the motion.
Whereas there is property located at 1977 Johnson Road, and there has been a realignment of Johnson, Johnson Road, so that our right of way has been shifted, and there's no longer a need for that right of way, and that is the only area where the current property owners can access their property, and it is a small piece of property. I would recommend a motion that the Board of Commissioners authorize the chairman to execute a quitclaim deed regarding the specific property of the right of way that needs to be abandoned, and since all of the property is covered by one property owner, it's not the normal abandonment where we can have to each side. So that's, that's the motion, is to execute a quitclaim deed regarding 1977 Johnson Road regarding the old Johnson Road.
I make the motion that the county attorney do a statement.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. At this time, we do need a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Yes, sir.